I want to call the regular meeting, January eleventh, 2021, City of Marlboro. Council made the order that you will please stand for a pledge of allegiance and follow that motion.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The City Council has the regular meeting agenda in progress. There would be one item that we would add, which would be item number four, which would be a resolution to set commercial and residential rates. We will ask to approve a contract, which would be item one. We will ask to set the commercial garbage rates. We will defer residential until a future council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve that entity again?
So.
Right or second?
Second.
That's probably second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Quan?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Motion carries against. Approval of minutes, approval of December twenty-eighth, regular meeting, regular work session meeting, and executive session meeting. You have before you, do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
That's probably second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Kirk Quan?
Aye.
And Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Motion carries against. Swearing in ceremony tonight, it is our pleasure to swear in, Councilwoman Renee Hesner, Councilwoman Dorothy Dean, and the pleasure will be with Judge of the State Court, Ms. Tannenbaum. And we'll take it, and we'll leave this side first. And if you have family that would love to get up there and take pictures, please do a free use.
So I'd like to say that it is my esteemed pleasure to be here this evening in the City of Marlboro, where I was here just a couple of weeks ago to enjoy the Christmas festival with my children. And I, it is my pleasure to swear in tonight, Councilmember Knight, Councilmember Dean, to continue the good work that they've begun in this city. And it's, City of Marlboro is a jewel in the crown of Clayton County. I'm Judge Tammy Long Hayward with the State Court of Clayton County. All right. I, Renee Saunders Knight.
I, Renee Saunders Knight.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member.
of this city, and I will support and defend the charter thereof.
I will support and defend the charter of this city thereof.
as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
and of the United States of America.
and of the United States of America.
I further swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I further swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
due this state or political subdivision.
due this state or political subdivision.
or authority thereof.
or authority thereof.
and that I am not the holder of any office of trust.
and I am not the holder of any office of trust.
under the government of the United States.
under the government of the United States.
any other state.
any other state.
or any foreign state.
or any foreign state.
which by the laws of the state of Georgia.
which by the laws of the state of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding.
I am prohibited from holding.
Okay. At this time, I'll accept your signature.
If I could very briefly and quickly bring up the rest of my family. You all may know them, but just to introduce my mother, Ms. Brenda Saunders, my wonderful children, my mini-me standing beside me, and my husband Quentin Knight.
Raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible. I, Dorothy Dean, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Dorothy Dean, do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city.
that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city.
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
and I will support and defend the charter thereof.
as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
as well as the constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia.
and of the United States of America.
and of the United States of America.
I further swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I further swear that I am not the holder of any.
unaccounted-for.
unaccounted-for public money.
do this state or any political subdivision.
do this state or any political subdivision.
or authority thereof.
or authority thereof.
and that I am not the holder of any office of trust.
and I am not the holder of any office of trust.
under the government of the United States.
under the government of the United States.
any other state.
any other state.
or any foreign state.
or any foreign state.
which by the laws of the state of Georgia.
which by the laws of the state of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding.
I am prohibited from holding.
Okay. It is my pleasure to accept your signature at this time.
And this is her mini-me.
I can steal your pen.
Excellent. At this time, we're going to recognize the motion of Detective Xavier Todd, the Sergeant.
For those of you who were here two weeks ago, we had a pretty sizable promotion. We had three, two lieutenants and two sergeants. And just recently, we had one to add to that, but Xavier was out, and so we weren't able to recognize him. And so obviously, not to deny him the pleasure and the honor of standing here in front of all of you guys, we had him come and had a promotion ceremony just for you. Sergeant Todd was currently a sergeant, was a detective. And one of the things that stood out about Xavier for the time that I've been here is his attention to detail. And one of the things that I recognized also was just, is how much he cared specifically about the victims that he dealt with on a consistent basis. I'm going to embarrass you on this one. Well, more recently, he received the humanitarian award by the department. Also, a news story ran about an investigation that he conducted, but it wasn't necessarily the investigation that he conducted that ended up bringing him to the attention of not just the department, but outside the city as well. It's the fact that in the investigation itself had involved a very young toddler. He was two years old. The two-year-old was shot in the head, managed to survive. But the incident happened around the time of his birthday. And so the boy being up in the hospital, not having the opportunity to have a birthday for him turning two, Xavier took it out of his own, out of his own volition. Xavier went out to the store and bought some toys and took the toys to him at the hospital. I didn't really think about it until I saw a picture from, that was sent to me by a sergeant. And of the twenty years or so that I've been doing this job, I'll probably remember that one for the rest of my life simply because just the kindness and the level of humanitarian that Xavier used and exhibited that day goes beyond the badge, goes beyond the job, the department, it just goes on the talk of, says a tremendous amount about the kind of person that he is, and how proud I am to be able to serve with you, and how proud, more proud I am now to be able to promote you to sergeant. Thank you.
In his defense, it just came out of the bucket.
Well, you know it's new now.
The next presentation is for Officer of the Year.
Before I get started, I want to send out a thank you, just to all the families, not just for law enforcement, public safety, but the council, persons who've been sworn in tonight. I thank the families for allowing them to also serve the city. It's not just a one-sided level of risk that our job inherently entails that kind of gives us the carpal arms to be told all the time, we know, hey, thank you for your service, we know it's dangerous, but also public service in general. Families often have to make a sacrifice. If you lose your families during prime time and have your family, your family member around when they're out serving for the public good, so thank you very much, and give yourself a round of applause for that. All right. Chris. So recently, I had a conversation about the past, present, and future of our department. That conversation provoked thoughts in me about who we have been, who we are now, and most importantly, who we aspire to be. I concluded that when you contemplate your past, present, and future, what you're truly considering is legacy. Legacy is a strong word. It carries weight, and it carries meaning. It can define actions, provoke intense feelings of pride, and motivate people to continue honoring that legacy. As I researched Marlboro, and specifically the Marlboro Police Department, I've learned something about our legacy. Marlboro hired its first police chief in nineteen sixty-one and selected Chief James Jimmy Collins, a then-retired auto mechanic. Chief Collins served the city by using his own family vehicle as the first and only patrol car that the department had at the time. Chief Collins had a dedicated telephone line installed into his home, which long before the invention of nine-one-one, was the line someone died on and he'd help. As he provided his own family's home, he also provided his own family's home as the first de facto Marlboro Police precinct and headquarters. He provided his own firearm, wore a plain white shirt, black trousers, which he purchased himself. In short, Chief Collins gave of himself in service to the City of Marlboro, asking what he could do for his community rather than what they could do for him. Chief Collins continued his service in law enforcement with the Clayton County Sheriff's Office in some he passed in nineteen eighty-five, serving a remarkable twenty-four years in his second career. His era has come and gone. The city has grown, and we have become a community rich in diversity, but I believe that these acts by Chief Collins established a sense of dedication and commitment that is alive and well in all of us who call Marlboro home to this very day. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is gratifying and a humble legacy for all of us to uphold and to carry to the future. Therefore, I have ordered that our Officer of the Year Award be named to honor the legacy of our city's first police chief, Chief James Jimmy Callaway. Chief, I'm sorry. Chief James Jimmy Collins, a lot of J's in C's, in recognition of his early contribution to our department and to the city as a whole. With that being said, I'm honored to present the Marlboro Police Department's Chief Jimmy Collins, Officer of the Year Award to our brand new sergeant, Christopher Glover.
I want to take this moment since he's out in front of the microphone to say that we managed to keep this a secret from Officer Glover, which if anybody knows anything about police departments and the way we talk to one another, is a remarkable accomplishment. So thank you, everybody.
So this is an actual picture that was at the police headquarters of Chief Collins's family-owned patrol vehicle, the City of Marlboro Police.
And our driveway.
So thank you. Thank you so much.
And the, I'm going to read to you all the proclamation identifying Sergeant Glover as the Officer of the Year, just to give you a little bit of a glimpse of how he was selected. So it reads, "The City of Marlboro Police Department Chief Jimmy Collins, Officer of the Year Award, is presented to Sergeant Christopher Glover for his extraordinary commitment to the department, his contributions to the community, and exceptional achievement above and beyond the call of duty. Throughout twenty-twenty-one, Sergeant Glover demonstrated extraordinary attention to duty, evidenced when he swiftly confronted an armed gunman who had just fired his weapon on January second. On the very next day, January third, he located and apprehended a murder suspect just moments after the crime was committed, and I do mean within five minutes of the murder occurring." Sergeant Glover located and apprehended him. Sergeant Glover worked diligently throughout the year to advance himself professional, completed all except one course towards his intermediate certification, and began supervisory training even before he was selected for promotion. Sergeant Glover was also responsible for a significant amount of field training by onboarding four new officers during the year. In October twenty-one, Sergeant Glover participated in the competitive selection process for sergeant, where his efforts were evident as he placed first in the selection process. Sergeant Glover is an excellent representation of what it means to be a Marlboro police officer and is a tribute to the legacy and selfless service first set by Chief Jimmy Collins in nineteen sixty-one. The Marlboro Police Department is proud to recognize Sergeant Glover as a twenty-twenty-one Officer of the Year.
Speech?
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 I wasn't prepared to give a speech, so I'll keep it short. First of all, you just got to know who your coworkers are so you know who you trust, because I ain't know nothing about it. Second, family too, because they slick. But like Chief said, it's about legacy. Everything I do in the police, and I do it with the community on my shoulders, my family on the shoulders, I do it as if you guys are always watching me to make you guys proud. Trying not to get emotional. But, you know, I love this city. Started as an intern with the department from Clayton State after I graduated. Chief Callaway hired me straight home, and I've been here ever since. I don't plan on going anywhere because the place loves me as just as much as I love you guys, and that's all I got.
Those who want to listen to the rest of the business, there's only going to take us about five minutes to finish this, but if you want to, ahead. What we'll do is we'll just leave the comments section, and then we'll catch up to business. So we have, I'll save our camera for the end.
Well, I must say, this is a great way to end the day. I was with the president and vice president earlier downtown at Clark University, and so this is also a wonderful, to see the police officers that have been honored, because I am the daughter of a police officer. My dad was a police officer with the Detroit Police Department. So congratulations to you all, and congratulations to your council person, people, Renee Knight and Dorothy Dean. They asked me to come. I do represent District Seventy-Seven. I represented the unincorporated part of Marlboro right now. My district will change. I won't be on this side of the county. After redistricting, I'll go straight up three-fourteen, which is okay, because when I first moved to Clayton County in nineteen ninety-five, my husband was the assistant principal at North Clayton High School, so it's kind of like going back home for me. Although my first teaching job was at Terra Elementary School, so I'm going to go now to the other side of the county. But earlier, well, last year, we were on a call with elected women, and it was stated that Clayton County had the most elected African-American women in the United States. And so at the time, we thought, okay, well, that's great, but the interesting thing about it is that it was proved, we took pictures outside of the old courthouse, let me take this off, we took pictures out in the old courthouse on Main Street. And the interesting thing was, then I wanted to know, I said, okay, when we took the pictures, now what are we going to do with them? And so the Lord revealed to me that we should do a book. And so it started off, and I just asked all the ladies that were elected if they would write a letter to the young ladies in Clayton County, because I really do, as a retired educator in Clayton County Public Schools, I believe that, you know, it is important for our youth to know their elected officials in their community and just the history of the place where they live at. And so we did the letters, and then in addition to the letters, in the book, it also explains what each position is. And the interesting thing about the forty-one women in Clayton County is it starts from our Congresswoman, the Kinga Williams, all the way down to our soul and conservationist representative that's also on our ballot. And the interesting thing about her was that, you know, we always say, you should make sure when you vote, you go down the ballot. And so we all get our ballots, and we all vote, and we always get to some position that we don't know what that position is, but we vote anyway. And so when we took the first picture, after we took it, the soil and conservationists, she called me, she says, I'm elected, I'm on your ballot, you voted for me, and I was like, okay. And we went back, we have to take another group picture, and to make sure. So that taught me too, the importance of making sure that you understand every position that you're voting for, and that you do vote all the way down the ballot, to make sure that everybody gets a people vote. And so this is our book. We only sell it at cost, and it's twenty dollars, and it has letters from out of the forty-one, it's thirty-eight of them have submitted letters. And so we're going to bring it out in the school district in the month of either February or March, probably in March, doing Women's History Month, just so that our young ladies know about the different positions that they can aspire to in our county, and even if they just want to be involved in the community. The whole goal of the book was just to make sure that the young ladies in our community know that the women that came before them care about them and that they are concerned about them. And as I said, we pretty much have a position in every area, in city government, we have in our judicial system, is district attorney, our clerk of Superior Court, and magistrate. And so it's designed just to preserve the history of Clayton County. So Councilwoman Knight and Councilmember Dean, we want to be to just share some information about that. So thank you for everything that you're doing here in the City of Marlboro. I'm really excited about our new president of Clayton State, and so the fact that Marlboro is really growing, and as the judge said, it is a jewel here in Clayton County, and, you know, we are really a great county, and we have a whole lot going for us, and we are going to continue on the things that I am working on, the new mayor of Atlanta. I've talked to him about the fact about that money for the airport. I'm the person that's always talking about the airport money. And so, you know, in order for us to continue as we are, we have to have that money. The airport sits in Clayton County, and so we're fighting for that money down there at the Capitol. We do have a bill, and I have a substitute to it for the airport, is that we're not just fighting just for the county or for the school district, we're fighting for every city in Clayton County to make sure that we do not, because it's the last year of that money, although we already received the grant, but we don't want to start another year and not have those funds. So the bill is in ways and means. If you know anybody that's down there other than just your Clayton County delegation, ask them to give us a hearing for our bill so that we can make sure that Clayton County remains whole and that those services that you receive in the City of Marlboro and in the county, that we continue to receive those services. And so we don't want to lose that money, and you'll notice that we'll lose it because either the taxes will go up, or there'll be certain services, like we like our senior services, our senior centers, you know, might not have them, or they might not function every day. So those are things that will affect you directly. So there's a lot going to go on down if it goes down. Of course, you know, we got out really, we started Monday, and of course, Georgia won last night, and because of that, we were out there long. We actually went in at eight-thirty, so that those that wanted to go to the game could fly out. That was very important. So, and we weren't in today. Today was a recess day, but we will start back tomorrow at eleven, and then the governor will do the state of the state on Thursday. So make sure that you are paying attention to everything that's going on. There's going to be a lot of different changes, and that your voice be heard, don't let me keep it silent. Thank you.
Other comments from the audience?
Dr. Suter?
We're going to put you on the spot.
Very important person.
You know, a college president is almost like a minister. They never miss an opportunity to stand behind the microphone. But certainly a privilege and honor to stand with you here today as the fifth president of Clayton State University. Want to thank the mayor, the city council, because one of the things that I talked about a hundred and ninety-four days ago when I came to Clayton State University is that we can and will be unapologetic about who we are, what we do, and who we do it for. And we are. And we are this city's institution of higher education. And together, we can and will not only elevate Clayton State, but more importantly, elevate the city of Morrow, Georgia, Clayton County, and this great state of Georgia. So thank you so much for having me here. Look forward to you giving some oars because at Clayton State, we like to say it's time to pick up our oars, dust them off, and get to rolling, rolling in unison so that we can all keep running. Thank you.
Comments from the city council?
I don't really keep my comments brief. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I look forward to the next four years of working to move the city forward. We're so excited about what is happening and our future. And we just have to stay trained and focused as a council that is as diverse as we are. We have to embrace our diversity. We always have to speak to real diversity and we have to move together so that we will bring to fruition the potential of the city. So I appreciate everyone that is here this evening. Thank you for the votes of confidence and I appreciate you all.
I will be sure and brief. Representative Burnout, Dr. Stewart, and Judge Stanley. Thank you. The legacy letters. The legacy letter meant a lot. It was an opportunity to share with future leaders of this city, this county. And I think it was such a project that was so on time. And I'd like to thank you all for that. And to the police department, our guys, thank you. And to citizens, you know, we're family, we're family. So thank you all so much for the vote of confidence and I'm ready to go to work.
I would like to say thank, thank you to whoever, everybody that come tonight, you were congratulated.
You're right.
Yep. Congratulations to Councilwoman Knight and Councilwoman Muller. Looking forward to continuing to work with you, that you guys. And thank you to our list of aldermen and the five aldermen. You know, we are always thankful and support, do whatever we can to support the people who love, who act for us day and night. Thank you, thank you all.
Well, congratulations for the new term for Councilman and Councilwoman Dean. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to celebrate this most moment of ours. Thank you for the police officer who helped us to fulfill our job. Thank you.
I want to recognize Thelma Ward, who is the wife of the gentleman who was named after his courtroom, Frost Ward, who's the city judge for Albert. And it's really nice to see that I have her. Thank you. Thank you to the state board for coming out swearing in and our police officers are our lifeline. We owe you a great debt that you have to see the day that we are here. To our citizens, if you want to hang out and enjoy yourself over at the thing, we're going to conduct business pretty fast, but it can be pretty boring. As you can see, it's written on the wall out there if you want to read it. And you can watch the YouTube video tomorrow if you want to stay in tune to it. You're welcome to attend or you're welcome to say. But for those who want to go to reception, which is right next door, if you come out of the hall, get to the left. The coffee's warm, the hearts are warm, and we appreciate you coming out to the reception.
All right, we're going to continue business. New business approval for the mission of purchase of the president of 2020. Police and the sector has a fine in the work section of the motion to approve by his second. Mr. Proper seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight, Ms. Tran. The approval request for the acceptance of the criminal justice ordinance of 2020.
$1,000 annually and to allow the merely execute the agreement and other related documents. Do I have that before you deliver the motion to approve?
No motion.
Motion is out here second.
Second.
Mr. Proper seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight, Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Ms. Quall.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a resolution to approve a contract with Waste Pro as, and to set the commercial garbage rates to prefer the residential garbage rates for the next council meeting. Item one will be to approve the contract with Waste Pro as defined earlier. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Proper seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight, Ms. Tran.
May I, the information is not given to me and not informed to make the decision.
Mr. Quall, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Quall. And Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Or not unanimously, it's three to one, Ms. Tran voted no. So you set the commercial garbage rates as it was defined in the project that you have right here? Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion probably seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight, Ms. Tran.
May the information be given to me, not enough time to inform and to support the law.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Quall. And Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. First reading of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance 22-01, which is the first steps of the legislation to increase hopefully the Homestead exemption for the city of Morrow. That is a first reading and no other action is required. Last comment section, hearing none. By the way, I'm just adjourned, we will go and enjoy ourselves next week.